I'll call the February 14th, 2019, Commission meeting into session. I would like to call on Commissioner Steve Irvin to come forward and offer our prayer, to be followed by our Pledge of Allegiance and the Pledge to the Tennessee Flag. Commissioner?
Let us pray. Dear heavenly gracious Father, we ask, thank you for the many blessings that you bestowed on us and our families. We ask that you be with us during this meeting and let our decisions be honoring to you, the county, and the people in it. We ask that you bless the leaders of our great nation and also the leaders of counties we serve in, in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Through my stars on a field of blue, God keep them strong and never treachery. It is with pride and love that we will salute the flag of the Tennessee.
Roll call. Record the roll, Madam Secretary.
We have truly present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a quorum. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips for approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I've reviewed those minutes. I found one clerical error. It's in item N1D. That's a resolution of agreement with the Public Building Authority. And the roll call, all was listed as present, and that should be changed to "a." All the other items seem to be in order. And with that one change, I would recommend that we dispense with the reading and that they be approved as submitted.
Have a motion by the chairman and a second. Any questions or discussion? All in favor signify by saying "aye." All opposed, motion carries. Resolutions of sympathy. I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips to read the resolution of sympathy for Mrs. Nancy Dodd. You're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. Is the family of Mrs. Dodd here, Phil? Could you please come up? As you remember, we had a moment of silence and a prayer for this family last week, and they've lost a very dear, loved one that's been a leader and a focal point in this community for years. And if y'all would bear with me for a minute, I would like to read a little passage that was in the obituary. And this is, once again, for Nancy Dodd. If y'all would bear with me, "I am the resurrection and the life, saith the Lord. He that believeth in me, though he were dead, yea shall he live, and whosoever liveth and believeth in me shall never die. I know that my Redeemer liveth, and that he shall stand at the latter day upon the earth, and through this body be destroyed; yea shall I see God, whom I shall see for myself, and mine eyes shall behold, and not as a stranger. For none of us liveth to himself, and no man dieth to himself. For if we live, we live unto the Lord; and if we die, we die unto the Lord. Whether we live therefore or die, we are the Lords. Blessed are the dead who die in the Lord; even so saith the Spirit, for they rest from their labors." Resolution of sympathy. Whereas it is with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Mrs. Nancy Scug Dodd, mother of Commissioner Phil Dodd and friend of many. And whereas Mrs. Dodd is survived by her four children, Leslie Dodd Carl, Ph.D., David Chip Dodd, Ph.D., and his wife Sonia, John Herbert Dodd Sr. and his wife Harriet, and Philip Scug Dodd and his wife Melissa, eight grandchildren and one great-grandson. And whereas Mrs. Dodd was married in May of 1954 to David T. Dodd, and they were married for 56 years until his death. And whereas Mrs. Dodd received her RN degree in 1952 from Baptist Hospital School of Nursing in Memphis, and whereas she was very active, beginning with the PTA at Reeves Rogers and Oakland High School, she was a co-leader of the first integrated Girl Scout troop in Murfreesboro, and served for many years on the Cumberland Valley Girl Scout Council. She was a member of the Rutherford County Planning Commission, on the board of the Rutherford County Court Drug Court, and the Rutherford County Medical Alliance, and she also attended the World Outreach Church. And whereas she was an active member of our community as a member of the Colonel Hardy Murphy Chapter of the DAR, Huguenot Society of the founders of Manneken County, Virginia, Oakland's Association, the Women's Club of Murfreesboro, CASA. And I had to look that up to make sure I knew what that was. It's a court-appointed special advocate for children. CASA, Master Gardeners of Rutherford County, and she and several friends formed the Painting Angels, a local water color group, and staged a show of work hanging in the trees surrounding her home. And whereas we know that her passing has caused great sadness to her family and friends, now therefore be resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 14th day of February, 2019, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Nancy Dodd, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to Mrs. -- the family of Mrs. Dodd by the clerk of this legislative body? Mayor Burgess, I move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Commissioner Dodd, any comments? You're quite welcome. I have a motion and a second. Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying "aye." All opposed, motion carries. I'd like to call at this time, a call on Commissioner Paul Johnson to read the resolution and sympathy of Mr. Pete Doughty. Commissioner, you're recognized.
I'd like the Doughty family to come up, if they would, please. Just a couple of comments, please. I've known the Doughty family for going on about 15 years, and I've had the privilege and honor of knowing them in different capacities, a neighbor, a supporter, and most of all, friendship. And even though Pete's audible voice is gone from the reader, I think his voice will stay for quite a few years in his legacy through the Rutherford Reader, reading of the resolution of sympathy. Whereas it was with great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Mr. Robert L. Pete Doughty, a friend of many. And whereas Mr. Doughty is survived by his wife of 57 years, Kay Sadler Doughty, and four sons, R. Keith Doughty, Patrick Lee Kimberley Doughty, Lee Michael Michelle Doughty, and J. Allison Doughty, 10 grandchildren and three great-granddaughters. And whereas Mr. Doughty was living in California when he moved to Nashville in 1998 to be closer to the three of his four sons, and soon after moved to Murfreesboro where he began the Rutherford County Reader, the Reader newspaper, in 2000. And whereas he was an active member of our community and had friends from all walks of life who were proud to call him friend, and whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on this 14th day of February, 2019, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Mr. Robert L. Pete Doughty, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Mr. Doughty by the clerk of this legislative body? I so move, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying "aye." All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Doughty, you want to say any comments? Okay. Well, our prayers with the Doughty family and the Dodd family tonight, prayers and sympathies to both of you. Thank you all for coming tonight. This time I'd like to call, next on the agenda, call on Commissioner Rhonda Allen to read the Smyrna High School bowling team resolution of recognition. Commissioner, you're recognized.
I'd like to invite the bowling team and coach to come on up. While they're coming, I'll let you know they've got two coaches. Mr. Seiler is not able to be with us tonight. His son is wrestling in a regional tournament, and so, of course, that needed to take priority. But he sends his regrets that he can't be here. The other thing that you should know about this team, as I read this, I want you to know, we always like to brag on these teams, and especially the ones that win state, but this particular group, they went undefeated. That's pretty impressive, y'all, so just keep that in mind. And we've got a terrific bowling facility in Smyrna, and, you know, so they're fortunate to have that, but they really brought it to life, you know, with their accomplishments. Whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners should recognize those persons and organizations who consistently have a positive impact on the people and communities of Rutherford County. And whereas the students, coaches, and parent volunteers associated with the Smyrna High School bowling team are all part of one such outstanding organization, which recently won the TWSAA Division One State Championship Game, earning Smyrna High School its fifth state bowling title since 2005 out of eight total appearances in the championship battle. Whereas this has been an exciting and impressive 24-0 undefeated season, and special commendation is due to all team members, along with coaches Carl Seiler and Kelly Marlin, for their dedication and commitment that gave Smyrna another memorable season and brought excellent publicity to our community by their good sportsmanship and inspired team play. And whereas the team finished 2017 season as runner-up, losing to Hardin County, and in 2018 as a semifinalist. In 2019, they entered the final match facing two-time defending state championship Hardin County once again, only this time Smyrna dominated the tournament from the beginning, winning by total pins of 373. Whereas in addition to the team advancing to the state championship, senior Josh Meek was the number four seed in the individual competition. He finished his high school career winning the Division One Individual State Title and was named Mr. Bowler. Whereas the 2018 team members are as follows: Aaron Rowe, Xavier Pal Short, who's going to go on to be bowling for Martin Methodist in the fall, Josh Meek, who'll be bowling for Lincoln Memorial University in the fall, Blake Evans, Timothy Smith, Elizabeth Cuda, James Boone, and Zachary Taylor. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that this legislative body extends this resolution of recognition to the 2018-19 Smyrna High School bowling team for its outstanding accomplishment of winning the 2019 Division One State Championship, and to coaches Seiler and Marlin for their dedication and commitment to these students. Resolve this 14th day of February, 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all in favor signify by saying "aye." All opposed, motion carries. Let's give them a round of applause. They're recognized, Coach.
Thank you, Commissioner Allen, Mayor Catherine, and the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners. It is our sincere wish to thank you all for your support and dedication to our program. The seniors that we have over here have amassed a record of losing only five times in their four years. Five matches they've lost in four years. An incredible run and incredible record. I'd like to thank the parents in the back there. If you parents would stand up, please. Literally, we would not have this program without them. Thank you. Thank you. And I hope that you all will wish us success as we go to the National High School Championships in June in Indianapolis. Thank you again.
Mr. Stevens, any comments?
Well, we thank you all for coming, and thank you for being number one. We all like being number one, and, you know, great success and good luck going to Indianapolis and Nationals, and go up there and win. This is your last year, seniors, so go up there and win for us, and come back, and we can call you national champions. We look forward to that, so good luck to you, okay?
Next on the agenda, I'd like to call on Chairman Pro Tem Jeff Phillips to read the resolution of recognition to Mr. Allen Farley and the Rutherford County Election Commission.
Thank you, Mayor Catherine. I'll try to get through this resolution without calling you Mayor Burgess.
That's all right.
My apologies.
I won't call you Commissioner Kush.
It's fair enough, thank you. Is Mr. Farley here? And any members of his staff or the Election Commission? Mayor Catherine, you have anything you want to say before we get into this?
I will. I'll just say that, you know, here again, we seem to be number one in everything that we do in this county, and that's our goal, because we are the best. When I carried this piece of legislation for you guys, you brought it to me and asked me to carry it, and I recall how many members in the Senate came up to me and said, "Wow, that sounds pretty neat. We might want to do that." Some counties will not be able to, because they don't have the computer equipment. However, it was a pilot. Rutherford County was a pilot. And then I'll let you go ahead and say how successful it was, and let the members and Mr. Farley say as well on the resolution. So congratulations. It was an honor for me to carry it.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution of recognition, Allen Farley, Administrator of Elections and the Rutherford County Election Commission. Whereas in 2016, Rutherford County Election Commission was selected to participate in a pilot project to determine whether convenient voting centers could successfully be established for local and state elections, and to make it convenient for voters to vote at a centralized voting area on Election Day in the county in which the voter is registered regardless of the voter's precinct. And whereas in a report recently published by Mark Goins, State of Tennessee Coordinator of Elections, the convenient voting centers have proven to be a valuable and effective voting option in Rutherford County. And whereas he further stated that the hard work and through preparation by Allen Farley, Rutherford County Administrator of Elections, and the member of the Rutherford County Election Commission, Carolyn Peebles, Ransom Jones, Richard Reeves, Felicia Hicks, and John Taylor, and the staff, as well as Brian Robertson and the staff of the Information Technology Department of Rutherford County, revealed that it is needed to make convenient voting centers a viable option in Tennessee. And whereas implementing the convenient voting centers required an investment in staff, equipment, and voter education, and whereas the Election Commission invested time to educate the voters, Allen Farley spoke to over 30 civic organizations, including the Rotary Club, the Kiwanis Club, the Lions Club, and the NAACP. And they used social media outlets such as Facebook and Twitter, as well as the county paid for signage which was placed at previously-used polling places. Whereas Rutherford County saw more than 4,000 people vote on Election Day in the November 2018 midterm election than people who voted in the November 2016 presidential election. And this increase does indicate that turnout may increase on Election Day when utilizing the convenient voting centers. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners at its regular session on the 14th day of February, 2019, does hereby extend this resolution of recognition to Allen Farley and his staff and the Rutherford County Election Commission for their commitment and dedication to the operations of this office and for their service to Rutherford County. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of recognition be forwarded to Mr. Farley by the clerk of this legislative body. Be this resolved the 14th day of February, 2019. Mayor Catherine, I so move to approve.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any questions? Without objection, all in favor signify by saying "aye." All opposed, motion carries. Mr. Farley, would you like to make any comments? Chairman of the Board?
Well, convenience voting came by with the help of a lot of folks and a lot of hard work. Allen Farley was the guy who, of course, led the charge, led the battle. He had the full support and encouragement of the commission. And another essential ingredient was the resolution passed by this commission unanimously supporting convenience voting. And then, of course, the legislative delegation in Nashville took it from there. They supported it, and it passed. Rutherford County was the first county in Tennessee to have convenience voting. Now since then, 14 other counties have asked to also have early or convenience voting. Some of them are not going to be able to do it, because they don't have the technical staff. Brian Robertson and his staff was also essential in putting this in place. So I think Rutherford County led the way and has a lot to be proud of, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Chairman Jones.
Just kind of touch on what Ransom has said. I spoke to many of you about this process back when we started, and then brought it before for a resolution and sent to the delegation. But this support, the support we had was unanimous throughout the community, the commission, both political parties. We had unanimous support from the Election Commission, which is something that you don't see. It's very rare today. But it was really something that was very transformational. We're 25 years of early voting, which, you know, 1994 was when we first started early voting. This is something that's going to be just as big as early voting was in 1994. So honored to be able to have our team here in Rutherford County with our IT department, which did a magnificent job of working with us. They learned some things about elections. We learned some things about technology. But it was a great partnership, and I really appreciate the support I have of the best Election Commission in the county and the state. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys. It means so much to Rutherford County to make it easier for people to cast their vote. That's the one thing about living in this country, is we have the opportunity to express who we want to vote for and on what items we want to vote for. So thank you for making it easier and coming up with this pilot program. Next, we, on the agenda, is now it's time for the public comments, and we have one person signed up to speak tonight. We ask that you come forward. This is Mr. Sam Hayes. Mr. Hayes, if you'll come forward and give your name and address, and please keep your comments to three minutes. We have to go into a public hearing right at 6:30, so... Mr. Hayes, you're recognized.
Okay. I'm going to get some signs up here going.
All right.
What I'd like to speak to you tonight is Rutherford County's attempted compliance with a certain federal safety standard. I've got one of these signs upside down here, but these are pictures of signs that I've taken in the, on the county streets and roads of, that are clearly out of compliance. They fail what's called retroreflativity. And if some of you don't know what that is, we can talk about that later on, but you all are supposed to be an authority of this. This is something that you would have voted on. You would have had discussions in this room. You would have chosen one implementation method over another. There are sundry of ways to meet this compliance safety standard. One of them is called measurement testing. One of them is blanket replacement. You would have discussed this extensively and then voted on it. I'm not here to talk about whether you did or you didn't. If that was not a conversation that had in here, and I don't know that it wasn't, and this is still not unacceptable, as far as a blanket replacement method that would have been chosen and implemented, then if that conversation has never happened in here, then I'd like to suggest and maybe put the gravity of that situation in a context that you might understand. Maybe certain law firms could go ahead and explore different types of litigation to pursue, and one of them would be the new legislation retroreflativity. And they could say, "Well, let's just go find the fastest-growing counties and municipalities in the state of Tennessee. Let's pull all the fatality access reports from that region and research the rate of increase of those number of fatalities. How many of those fatalities investigations have caused for collision unknown?" Or, in other words, fill in the blank. And then we can maybe investigate, pull all the public records to see if discussions about retroreflivity ever occurred in their public forums ever. Maybe there's no minutes of that discussion ever. Did those government officials discuss and ultimately choose a compliance method with a public vote in some way, or did they never choose it at all? How did they ever choose and implement such a costly method that would have been about $1 million for 20,000 signs without the public's knowledge or consent? Perhaps those elected members do not even know what retroreflivity is 10 years after the deadline. Then let's go pull all available documentation from those respective streets and signs and road divisions that would have been kept on file as proof of the agency's actual compliance with the federal safety standard, instead of just saying they did. What do their records show as how many signs that they blanket replaced, if they did go blanket replaced those signs? And how many streets did they blanket replace them on? Do they know? Do they have these records? If they do not have any of that information, and they come out as a candidate to pursue by litigation, then I would say what...
Mr. Hayes, I might have to call time, I'm sorry.
I got you. All right.
We certainly appreciate you coming tonight.
Yes, sir.
And if you'll stick around, any commissioners want to talk about sign reflectivity after the meeting? He'll be here. Thank you so much for coming and speaking your time. Yes, sir. Thank you, sir.
This is permissible. I would like to advise the gentleman that, I've been on the Highway Department Board for 19 years, and the Highway Department has already addressed this program, and if you would be willing to come to our board meeting, it will be the first Monday in the month at 7:00. And you can express any concerns that you have to them, but we have already been addressing those concerns, as far as the Highway Department is concerned, because of their signage, et cetera. So we're very much aware of it, and we're not in the dark, okay?
Well, Mr. Hayes does make a good point. A lot of times you'll see speed signs, and some signs, the glass crystals that they apply to the signs fade over time. But I think that's a good point, Mr. Hayes, to take Commissioner up on his invitation to go out to the road board. to go out to the road board. Commissioner Rather, you're recognized.
So you understood he said the meeting was at seven Monday? It's AM. It's early in the morning. Just clarify that.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. It's six-thirty, and now it's time for our public hearing. I'll call on County Planning Director, Mr. Doug Demasi. Mr. Demasi, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren, and good evening, Mayor, and members of the Commission. We have one public hearing tonight for your consideration. This is for property located at the intersection of Low Lane and Highway 99. The applicant is Ms. Teresa Robertson. This application was actually presented before the Planning Commission originally back in January of last year. The applicant was proposing to rezone a portion of their eight-acre property for commercial purposes. Following the public hearing and discussion by the Planning Commission at that time, the application was deferred to allow the applicant a chance to better identify the area they wanted to rezone. There was a little bit of unknown as far as exactly how much they wanted to rezon. They had a rough estimate, but they wanted a little bit more surety in that. There were also some questions about the septic soils on the property, infrastructure availability, those kind of things. The minutes of that meeting back in January of 2018 are included on your Agenda packets on your iPads if you'd like to take a look at those. Since that time, the applicant has subdivided off a portion of their property, about 2.14 acres, which was recorded back in November of last year. Conversations with the applicant indicate they wish to rezone that 2.14 acres and use the property to build an office building for their business. Again, there's a memo with your Agenda packets that you'll see with that information on it. The applicant currently lives adjacent to the subject property. They haven't provided a concept plan to this point, but if this were to be approved, they would have to go through the site plan review process at the Planning Commission. The closest non-residential zoning district along Highway 99 is Commercial Services, which is located about a quarter of a mile to the southwest of the subject property. The closest non-residential zoning to the northeast is about one and a half miles away. There's also a small pocket of commercial neighborhood zoning at the intersection of Low Lane and Old Jackson Ridge Road, South Windrow Road intersection, which is about a half a mile to the northwest of this property. Access would have, they would have right-of-way access on both Low Lane and Highway 99. Again, should this application be approved, they would have to submit a site plan for a Planning Commission review. Access would be evaluated at that time. Any access onto Highway 99 would have to be approved through the state as Highway 99 is a state road. Landscaping and performance standards, again, would also have to meet county requirements and would be verified at the site plan review stage. There was very little discussion of this item at the Planning Commission's meeting. Following the public hearing, the Planning Commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to enter any questions you may have at this time.
I call the Rutherford County, excuse me, questions for Mr. Demasi from the Commission. Any questions? Hearing none, I'll call the Rutherford County Board of Commission meeting into recess and hold the public hearing. On this request, the public hearing is now in session. Anyone desiring to speak for or against this issue, please come forward. State your name, address, and whether you are for or against the proposed request. Seeing no one coming forward, I declare the public hearing closed, and Rutherford County Board of Commissioners back into session. Do I have a motion? Commissioner Reed, you're recognized.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of the applicant's request with the staff's comments.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion? Without objection, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Next on the agenda is elections and confirmations, and I call on Steering Committee Chairman, Robert Stephens. Mr. Stephens, I'm sorry. Vice Chair. I have to tell the Secretary to change that. Yes, sir. Mr. Harris, Vice Chairman, Steering Vice Chairman, Mr. Craig Harris. You recognize Mr. Harris.
Members, you will see a list of notary applicants on your iPads and make a motion for their approval.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Without objection, all in favor signify by saying aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
We need to fill a vacancy on the Conservation Board. Steering Committee recommends Ben Cates, and I move for his approval.
Have a motion and a second on filling the vacancy on the Conservation Board. Any questions? Without objection, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
We'd like to announce two vacancies. We have one for Tenth District Commissioner, and we'd also like to announce vacancy for the Industrial Board in Health and Education and Facilities, term to expire 2023. We would also like to fill a Commissioner Chaplin vacancy. The Steering Committee recommends Steve Irvin, and I move for his approval.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? Discussion?
I just wonder if it would be feasible if we suspend the rule? We got anyone here that's already put their names in for the Tenth District to introduce
Yeah, I think it'd probably be appropriate, Commissioner, to do that in Steering Committee to let both of them come and introduce themselves.
I understand.
They're all three here anyway, but anyway, we'll do that in Steering. Now we have a resolution on approval of the consent agenda, and I call on Chairman Pro Ten, Mr. Jeff Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Kethren. I've reviewed that consent agenda. I do find all those items appropriate, and without any recommendation from any Commissioner about removing those items, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and a second. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Roll call.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote, Madam Chairman. Madam Secretary.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Awesome. Members, we need to go back. We did not vote on our chaplain, Mr. Irvin. We had a motion and a second. All in favor of the motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I move that the nomination seats of Mr. Irvin be elected by acclamation.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Any questions? Seeing none, all in favor, vote for Commissioner Irvin by acclamation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We need to appoint a committee to replace Brad Turner.
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. Did we need to cover...
I'm sorry. Confirmation of appointment of Commissioner Craig Harris to the Ethics.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the recommended nominee for this position.
Have a motion and a second for Mr. Craig Harris on the Ethics Committee to replace Mr. Brad Turner. Any discussion? Comments? Seeing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. At this time, we'll move into our budget. Call on Commissioner P., if you would, please come forward. You're recognized.
Thank you, sir. First thing on our agenda is to confirm some of the design for the renovations for the courthouse resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows from the county mayor's budget. Increase expenditures for engineering services, forty thousand dollars. Decrease unassigned fund balance, forty thousand dollars. Resolve this fourteenth day of February 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Got a second? You're on the board.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Next thing on the agenda is to approve transfer of funds for the Sheriff's Department. Resolution, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. Increase expenditures confidential, fifteen thousand dollars. Decrease restricted fund balance of fifteen thousand dollars. Resolve this fourteenth day of February 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Got a second? You're on the board, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record a vote.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
This next resolution is from the Highway Department for Equipment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the Highway Fund be amended as follows. Increase expenditures for highway equipment, one hundred and ten thousand dollars, and decrease their assigned fund balance, one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Resolve this fourteenth day of February 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Have a motion and a second. Discussion? You're on the board, cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Secretary.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Okay, this next resolution has to do with making insurance available to the county commissioners, school board members, and road board officials. Resolution, whereas there is a desire for the county commission, school board, and road board officials to be eligible to participate in the medical, dental, vision, and life plans the county offers, and whereas the summary plan documents will need to be amended for the plans that do not include the elected officials as a member class, and whereas these officials choosing to participate in the insurance plan would pay the entire premium with no supplement from the county. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are hereby authorized to execute all required documents and amend the summary plan documents to make the county commissioners, school board, and road board officials eligible members of the medical, dental, vision, and life plans for which the officials will pay the entire premium with no supplement from the county should they choose to participate. Resolve this fourteenth day of February 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion and a second. Questions? Comments? Commissioner Gurley, you're recognized.
Thank you. I'm not sure I can support this. For one thing, this body less than one year ago voted itself to double its per diem payments. Not long ago, we've voted to remove certain spouses and so on from eligibility for, to acquire insurance. And while it's been stated somewhat in the documents that we've received, there's no risk to the county, I'm not sure I agree with that. I know that some individuals, and this was shared not from access from any particular privileged information, but from the individual themselves, that their medical expenditures have ran into the millions. And this, so all it takes is one person added on to make this a risk situation. So I think it's just something that we should think long and hard about before we jump to do this. Thank you.
Comments? Commissioner Cook.
On the life insurance, I'll vote against it because I took out life insurance when I first come on the county commission, and there was two or three of us that did it at that time. The older you get, when you get seventy, they cut it. When you get seventy-five, it was cut again. When you get eighty, it's cut again. So I didn't have enough life insurance to even buy the cup to bury me in, so I said, let's cancel it. So I want everyone to keep that in mind when you vote on life insurance. I didn't know it was going to be on county commission this long, but I'm proud to be here.
Thank you, Commissioner Cook. Commissioner Allen, you're recognized.
Thank you. Just from serving on Insurance Committee, I think it's important that I convey to you the same concerns were expressed in Insurance Committee that Commissioner Gurley brought up, and that is the negative feedback that we're going to get from employees and the community as a whole in terms of the decisions that we made in order to, the cost-saving measures that we made in terms of moving spouses off of the plan. The reason that we did that was because as we looked at utilization, we were spending more money on spouses than we were on employees. And so, you know, we had put off increases as long as we could, and finally, that was a change that we felt like we needed to make for the overall health of the plan. So it is, as we discussed this in Insurance Committee and then as we discussed it again at Budget, it is a small risk. It's a calculated risk, and that's what they're saying, is that the plan is big enough to absorb the risk to the employees, but we are a self-funded plan. And so from that standpoint, there's always a risk, and that's why you buy insurance, is because there's a risk. That's the very nature of it. So I just want to make sure that the people who had a dissenting opinion were heard, and so that's the reason that I voted against it the times that it's been in front of me, and I just want to make sure that you all know that as well.
I'd also like to make a quick comment. I don't plan on utilizing this, but over the years of being on the Commission, I know that there were commissioners that did want and need an insurance policy. Mr. Gurley is exactly right. There is a chance of adding, I think the maximum was like thirty-five people that could possibly be added between...
be added between the three boards. However, what convinced me to go ahead and say, I'm okay with this, is there is a stop-loss.
Seven fifty.
Seven hundred and fifty thousand. So anything over that, our insurance will pick that up. So we're not going to be cracking, cranking up bills, millions of dollars on one individual. But just to clarify that, I'm not trying to twist anybody's arm or anybody to vote one way or the other on this, make up your own minds on it. But I do want you to have the facts. Thank you.
Commissioner Gammann.
Question I got is, how much is the total premium? On top of that, and how many commissioners in here would actually qualify for it? And people on Medicare and things like that, it wouldn't even apply to on top of that. So I'm just kind of curious. There's not a lot of information, not trying to challenge it or anything like that, but I, I don't know. I'd like to know how much.
Commissioner Harris, you recognized? You're on.
Commissioners, I'm the one that proposed this. And the reason I did is because I wanted to give the commissioners an opportunity to get into our group. I'm not really going to go over everything else. Commissioner P. also told you about the stop-loss. The premiums were given to the, got a copy for you right here, Commissioner? We have a list of the premiums already. And if there's any question as to what it is, then we got that right here. Thank you, sir.
Other comments, discussion? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of questions. If, if a commissioner was employed and had insurance coverage through their employer, would that make them ineligible for this coverage? Would they be required to sign up through their employer? That's number one. And then, number two, those of us that have long since been on Medicare would be ineligible because Medicare comes first. So I would assume that that would make commissioners who have insurance other places would be ineligible to sign. Is, is that correct?
I personally can't answer that. I don't know if we have a representative from the insurance.
Ms. Chairman?
Ms. Lois Miller, our risk manager, she's here. If, if we could go into recess to allow Ms. Miller to come up and answer some of these questions, because I knew that, I asked her to come tonight because it might get a little deeper than Lois can answer. Ms. Miller, you're recognized. Did you hear the first question?
Regarding whether or not the commissioner could take the county plan over their own plan if they're eligible to, through their employer. If you've already got insurance through your employer, you would stay with your employer for that because your employer would be contributing. County's not going to contribute to this plan, so it would be a costly move in order to move your insurance over to the county plan.
And people who are ineligible to Medicare?
They would be wise to stay with the Medicare, yes.
I agree. I just wanted to bring that up and make sure that the percentage of commissioners that may opt into this would, in my opinion, be fairly small.
I would agree with that.
Any other questions for Mrs. Miller? Commissioner Rother.
I think I asked this, we talked about it in steering, and I, again, I just want clarification. Spouse works for the county. I have a small business that does not offer those benefits. So when I go check that box in the enrollment period, asking if my employer, which I'm self-employed, offers insurance, I say no.
Correct.
So I've asked this before, and I just need to ask it again, make sure I get consistent answers, I guess. Because it's concerning to me that when we do this, what do I check on that box? Am I an employee? Although I'm elected official, I would think I wouldn't be considered or classified an employee so that I could honestly, on that forum, say, no, I don't have other insurance available.
That's, that's accurate. You would not be considered an employee of the county, you're just a member of the covered class.
That's all I had. That's, that's been my only concern with the whole thing. But I think I'm of the opinion, if you, you can get insurance, you should take advantage of that. You know, the leading cause of bankruptcies is medical expenses. So I'm, I'm not against people having insurance, but I just want to make sure where I stand with that so that I don't lie on a document during enrollment, then I'm on the front page of the paper.
Other questions? Commissioner Stevens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The question was asked, what are the rates? So I'm going to answer that now, so the public can know how much it would cost a commissioner to join this plan. So for a single member to join, just the commissioner, the road board, or the elected school board member by him or herself, is $648.64 a month for the premium. So for me personally, that's about four times what I'm paying now, so I would not want to join this plan. If you are going to add a spouse in addition to the elected official, the premium is $13,6215 every month. If you're adding children but no spouse, it's $11,999.97. And if you're adding your spouse and your children, the premium is $1,881.03. So, and this is completely paid for by the elected official, but the county is not matching or not subsidizing this in any way. So it's a very expensive program for someone to buy into that if they want to do it. And I don't think that many people will, but I don't have a problem with them having that option.
Other comments for Ms. Miller? Seeing none. Thank you, Ms. Miller, for coming up. We'll come back out at recess, back in full session. We're back on the motion. Do we have a motion? Comments? Yes, Commissioner Reed.
When we discussed this in steering, I did vote against it at that time. And no, I'll not be voting again for it this time around. And I, I have to explain my reasoning for that. When I ran for county commissioner, I ran as county commissioner not for any type of benefits. I ran to serve the people of Rutherford County. And that's what I was doing, not looking for benefits or whatever. And when I think about this, I think that sometime down the line, our insurance and what we do with it, and what it's covering, and what has to do for our employees out there, we have to make decisions at times of what to do with that insurance. We have to change it at different times. And I don't want to come within the way, I think, when I have to vote on that, I want to think totally on what is the best for our employees, not what it has to do with my coverage, or what it has to do as if I'm involved with it too. So I guess I'm saying that I'm voting based on the fact that I don't want to be included as riding on the employee's wagon when it comes to my vote. And that's basically the way my decision will be made this evening.
Any further discussion, comments? Commissioner Gammann.
And I'm not going to be a dead horse to death here, but I'm, I'm a retired county employee. Single coverage, and my wife works for the state. And I'm paying $515 a month for single coverage. That's pre-65. I understand that. But there's a lot of people out here that, I'll say this, that are retired employees, pre-65, for one reason or another, burned out, or just health-wise, or got fired or something. But I mean, when the, I mean, it's good insurance, I know it is. I was on Insurance Committee for about eight years. But at the same time, I know there's a division between active, pre-65, and post-65. Of course, post-65, big deal. I mean, you're at that point to where Medicare, everything kicks in. And I'll be on that in a year. But the thing that bothers me is, I just, you know, I just think, I just think we've got to be a little more prudent in the sense of, if that's the right word, of retirees. And it's not going to matter to me, I just went back on county insurance at one point. And, and that was the cost of what it is. And, you know, that was a big jump. And, I mean, I could have went to my wife's policy, been a lot cheaper, but I wanted to come back to the county. But it still gets me, on the Insurance Committee, we had a lot of teachers, a lot of people retired at a lot less salary than I made. And when this thing's 500 bucks a month, and, gosh, I guess this last year in January, I noticed it shot up like $75 a month. And that's a big hit, you know, on top of that. So all I'm going to say is, sometimes we say it's at no cost to the county, and it's probably not that many people from this commission or other boards that's going to be on it to understand it. I just wish I knew how many. And to see what the cost would be and go from there, I'm not against it necessarily, but I'm also, you know, concerned about county insurance that changes from year to year, I believe as Commissioner P. just said. And I've seen it change. I mean, I was on it for 38 years. So, and it's a big issue in front of us there, not just with trash and everything else. County insurance is one of the biggest costs to the county above a lot of things with, you know, people being sick, cancer, this and that, you know. So, you know, that's all I've got to say. I'm not going, not going to beat it.
Other comments? Discussion? Commissioner Piercey, you recognized?
The other night on Budget, I voted against this. And I was called on the telephone by one of our fellow commissioners and wanted to know why. You couldn't have wrote my answer down any better than Mr. Gurley put it out in, at first. I'm sure he'll agree because he's sitting here listening now. To change your health insurance is a big, is a big deal. You know, we're here about three and a half more years, and we're going to have another election. Will we carry this health insurance with us if we no longer serve on this commission or any of the other elected boards?
I can answer that, you will not. It ends, now you can, I forget the term, but if you, COBRA is available for you for a few months after that. But if you are no longer a member of one of those boards, then you're gone. Nine, nine months?
So if we were to change and not be reelected, we'd have to go back and look for a new insurance in which, at most of us, our young age that we are, will be looked at pretty hard looking for new insurance. It might be something you want to consider before you vote to do this. Thank you.
Commissioner Harris, you recognized?
I appreciate everybody. I know I brought this up. And to answer your question, I'll try to go as good as I can. It's 18 months, Commissioner Piercey, after you get COBRA. To answer your question, Mr. Gammann, it was, we had got contacted by Cigna and Mercer, and it will not affect the rates. So that's yours. Is, and I, you know, as far as Commissioner Reed goes, I'm simply trying to have an opportunity for a commissioner if they need insurance. And I'm able to, we work for this county, work for the county people, and I just simply, all I was trying to do is just get, make sure the commissioner's had an option. And anything other than that, I had no ulterior motive or nothing like that. I really believe that the participation is going to be very low. I don't believe it'd be a whole lot. So, that's all.
Other comments? Commissioner Makado.
I keep hearing this question, the participation is going to be very low. We got 20 commissioners up here. If they're not afraid, we could poll the House right now and see who's going to participate in this program. If there's no objection, I would like to see the commission poll to see who's going to participate in this insurance. Because we may be talking about something that, that could mean, not mean a hill of beans to us if nobody's going to participate. So I would like to see that done if it's all possible.
Commissioner Makado, I formally have a motion that I can't accept another motion unless somebody retracts that motion to accept it. And then I'm not sure, call on our counsel attorney, I'm not sure we could actually poll.
I don't know. I don't know that you could formally force a polling vote on who would participate and who would not in this context. I suppose if people just wanted to voluntarily raise their hand, that might be something different. But I don't think there's a formal way to create that environment in a meeting like this.
I don't, just, just to make a comment, I don't mind telling how myself, I don't plan on utilizing this. And I'm not trying to push it one way or the other, I just want you to have the facts out there. And I don't mind, if y'all want to show hands, as far as I'm concerned, you know, mine is, you know where, where I'm at. But I don't mind withdrawing my motion if that would do it, Josh. But I, I'm kind of like the rest of you, I don't think there are very many of us that are going to opt into this.
Commissioner Makado.
Well, since we're all commissioners, we could... Ask my fellow commissioners if they would volunteer to stand up, the one that's going to use it.
Going to make me go sit down, Commissioner, because I'm not going to utilize it, so. I don't, I don't think it's a motion. And talk to the council, I, I think you could just, in your comments, say, or stick their hand up if you're going to vote for it, but, you know. Commissioner Gurley?
Yes, I'd like to call for the question. I think we've, we've talked about this, let's just go ahead and vote on it and be done with it.
Question, question's been called. I'm sorry?
No, I didn't, I said I could have.
He did not. Question's been called, it's not debatable. We're on the board. Everybody, you're on, on the board, everybody cast your vote. That, what you voted on was not, we were voting on calling the question. Let me, let me verify that. We were voting on calling the question. All in favor of calling the question, signify by saying aye. All opposed? Now we're back on the original motion. And we'll go on the board, everybody cast their vote.
Mary Ketchin?
Yes.
Our voting machines come on when you...
I click cancel.
Just barely kiss it, Joe Frank. Barely touch it. There you go.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the vote, Madam Secretary.
Twelve yes, seven no, one abstain. Motion passes.
Motion passes. Next item.
Okay, the last item on our agenda is the architect contract for the courthouse renovations. And this is the...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Commissioner Phillips.
Before we get away from the insurance, I would just kind of like to recognize Ms. Miller, come in after being retired for a number of years, and job only for a couple of weeks, is doing, in my mind, an outstanding job. And I just want to let her know how much I, and I think this commission... her know how much I, and I think this commission appreciates her coming out of retirement and taking us through a really tough time of the year that we're having. And I just want her to know how much we appreciate her coming back and helping us through this challenge.
We do. Thank you, Ms. Miller. Thank you. We, we will be concluding tomorrow. We have the final two interviews for the replacement of the risk manager. We've already interviewed several, and the final two will be tomorrow. So hopefully, by the time we meet again, we'll have a new risk manager. If not, we'll go back to the drawing board. Next item, Mr. Chairman? Okay, the architect contract for the courthouse renovations. And most of you got a update on what we voted for out of budget. And that's because we actually got the bid in quicker than we expected. So it's reflected here. The resolution, whereas there is a need to renovate and beautify the Rutherford County Historic Courthouse, and whereas it is proposed that Rutherford County enter into an agreement with Klein-Sweeney Associates at an estimated cost of $53,088 to provide architect services for the project. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the county mayor, and all other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, and are hereby authorized to execute an agreement with Klein-Sweeney Associates. A copy of the same being attached hereto as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference, as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for architect services for the renovation and beautification of the historic courthouse, resolved this 14th day of February 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move. I have a motion. Is there a second? And a second? Discussion? Questions? Commissioner Allen?
I have a couple of things. When we discussed this the other night, the reason that I voted yes was because Bart Klein was there, and he really stressed the need for the engineering piece, to go ahead and be redesigning the drainage and the pavers outside and, you know, some of those real safety issues. And I know there were some architectural pieces in there as well, but he really stressed the engineering part of this. And as I look at their agreement, on page 2, 2.1, when it goes to the definition, it's actually 2.11, it only describes architectural services. It doesn't in any way reference engineering services. Or when it does, it talks about normal structural, mechanical, and electrical. But it doesn't talk about the drainage and the sewage and those kinds of things. So I'm just concerned, I want to make sure that we're getting what I voted yes on.
I, I did talk with him yesterday, Commissioner, and, and that does include that, because I, I shared with him yesterday morning that there were a couple walking in to pay their property taxes to the trustee, and, and they had to splash through the lake out there. And I told him, I said, just bear with us. We're, we're going to stock that pond out there first, but, but we are going to try to remove it. You know, trying to make justice to that. But, but that is a priority.
Well, I'm just curious, would it be appropriate then if we amend the resolution to not only say architectural service, but to add architectural and engineering?
Engineering.
I'd just be more comfortable with that.
That, that would be appropriate.
If that was in there. And then, there, also on page 7, 11.5.1, it, it referenced, in, in the page I just read from on payments, it referenced a timeframe. And in that, this is, it's just a boilerplate contract. It was probably just overlooked. But on the timeframe, that was left blank. And that, and what it is, is it's dictating that if, if we don't conclude these services within X amount of time, then they're deserved to go ahead and be paid. But that box is left blank. So I'm just, and if it was left blank intentionally, I'm wondering if somewhere in there we need to, it needs to say, this blank, is, is blank on, you know, on purpose. So just a couple of housekeeping things. And, and I would like to go ahead, if we can, if you need me to, I can go ahead and make the motion that we add the engineering services.
Okay.
Mr. Gurley wants to make a comment first, if we can do that.
Have an amendment to the resolution to add engineering services into that. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second. Discussion? Commissioner Gurley?
Well...
On the amendment?
The, my comment was going to be that we really didn't need to amend that portion because normal, from a normal engineering standpoint, structural and, and mechanical would fall within drainage and so on type of issues. You, that, that is engineering.
Okay. Well, you, do you want to agree with that, or?
Yeah, I just read that to mean engineering, I mean, the engineering of the building, or, I'm sorry. I read that to mean architectural and engineering of the building. Because as it's described, it says, include normal structural, mechanical, and electrical engineering. Mechanical's the building, electrical's the building. That's not drainage, and that's not sewage. So that's the reason that I want to add that.
Stand up, Commissioner.
Civil engineering documents, which really these are talking about, totally different from architectural. So I agree with Rhonda, it needs to be amended.
Okay. Other comments? Okay, we have a motion to add the word engineering as an amendment into the resolution? I'm sorry? It was the second on the amendment. That second from Commissioner Phillips. Okay. All in favor of the amendment of adding the word engineering into the resolution signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Back on the resolution as amended. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We amended our budget earlier for $40,000, and I thought that was going to cost us $50,000 for this, but the contract says $53,088. So is there enough money in that line item already, or do we need to add more money to it to pay for the full amount?
There is. I'll, I'll let Ms. Nolan, I'll defer to Ms. Nolan. Ms. Nolan, you recognize?
It's an estimated cost. So we've got 50. With this 40 that you approved, that now takes us to 50. So two things can happen. One, this is the estimated cost based on the ultimate construction documents. If you look back on that, about where that page was, you were saying, it's a formula, how they come up with it. So after all is said and done, it may be enough, or it may not be enough. It all depends on the, you know, your construction documents. Secondly, this probably, you know, if it's, as we're getting through the year, if it looks like after you've approved bids, we could revisit that and see, and then either adjust it, or just let it ride. We're within $3,000 of this.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, we're back on the motion as amended. Commissioner Allen?
I just want to ask Josh real quickly, should we be concerned at all about that blank box on page 7, 11.5.1?
The time period? Yeah, well, I noticed the time period too, but I don't, I don't know what you would put in there at this point, because I don't know what the discussions have been about the, about what the timeline would be for him to complete these design activities. So I'm at a little bit of a loss. My preference would be that there is some kind of at least estimated time period in a contract like this, so that you have something to hold them to, since you've already got a payment schedule in the agreement. But I don't know what that should be.
That was my question. Do you have a recommendation? Do you have a recommendation?
Well, in, in discussion, I'll give this back to, to Mr. McCary. In discussion, we were kind of hoping to get all this done and out of the way by July 1, before farmers' market actually starts, and we realize that government moves much slower than that, and it's not going to happen. By the time that we go through this process, we put it out to bid, Mr. Klein gets all the different contractors to come in here, it's probably going to be sometime by the time they finish the project, maybe September 1, if we're lucky, depending on weather, you know, being able to get the, what they have to do on the pavers where they're sinking. We, Mr. Sandler came up with an idea, instead of having to replace all of those, he said, why don't you try it? And, and, and the architect said, yeah, it's worth a try. Take the pavers that have been turned down, because they've all faded over the years, for the last 20 some odd years, turn them upside down, that have been facing down, turn them up, pressure wash them, and see if, if the color's any different. So he's willing to try that. If not, then they're going to have to order pavers and bring those in. So, you know, it's a, I, I would say, no later than September, October is, you know, it's going to push us six months anyway.
So how would you, since we're referencing, this is an exhibit to the resolution, how would you recommend that we resolve a, a missing piece of information in the exhibit?
I'd say we just hypothetically come in, we can always come back and, and put in at least September 1. Mr. Chairman?
But you think we need to add it to the resolution? Is that what you're recommending?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Allen, may I?
Yeah.
I, I just happened to notice on, up on the top of page 7, there's a statement typed in preliminary design. This is a design contract too, by the way, not construction.
It's not construction, right.
Preliminary design will start in February, and contract documents will be complete in May 2019.
Okay.
It appears to be in the wrong section, though, Commissioner Allen. Am I reading this correctly, Josh, that page 7, paragraph 11.3.1?
Yeah, I do see that in there, but you're right. That, that section is actually to address the compensation, it's, it says. But it does seem to articulate a timeline for the design phase. So it may be that you could plug in, you could, you could amend to plug in the May 2019 date in the blank. That would, that would duplicate your timeline.
I was, I was referring to the construction completion, but you're correct, Commissioner Dodd. That's your livelihood, knowing that. Thank you for the good catch on that. So, Commissioner Allen, you want to amend to what Commissioner Dodd's picked up on?
Yes, I'm fine with that. The, it just says May 2019. Doesn't say May 1, May 31. So, and I don't know if it's easier, I mean, you've been in closer conversations with them, if we want to make it a break at the fiscal year, you know. So really, I'll kind of follow your lead on what you think in terms of that. But, but I will make the motion to put a date.
A date.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dodd, your recommendation?
May 31, okay. I make a motion that we amend the resolution to include the completion date for the work, for the design work, to be May 31, 2019.
May 31.
I thought I said 19, sorry. 19.
Okay, so we have another motion, motion number two, I mean, amendment number two and a second, to change the date to May 31, 2019. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Other further, any further discussion, questions? We're back on the original motion as amended. Any further questions or motion? Seeing none, we're on the board. Cast your vote.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Thank you very much. Good discussion.
Mayor Ketchum?
Yes, sir.
The other night on budget, I asked a question about the federal grant money, if there happened to be any out there to help us on restoring this historical building. Were you able to find out anything?
Yes, sir, we did check. And I believe Ms. Nolan talked to Reba, our grant writer. She was looking. We both, what I found and what she found was basically the same. There was one from the state of Tennessee, and we missed it. All grant applications had to be in by September 1. And... Or January 31. Okay, so we had just missed it. But in order to do that, you would have to apply, start putting together your grant application, what, 60 days and 90 days in advance?
Yes.
Outside of that, that's the only one we were able to find.
You project, do you project all this work to be finished by January 1 of the coming year?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Everything, carpet and everything?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Allen?
Okay, just as a follow-up to that point, to that conversation we had about the, the grant money, was the idea behind pursuing grants was that we wouldn't spend tax dollars doing this, because we have so many needs that are coming in front of us, that we just want to be as frugal absolutely as possible. And so I guess my question to you is, is there any way to stage out the work intentionally with an effort to seek grant money? Lisa has an answer.
Ms. Nolan?
Yes, I, I talked with the folks at the state of Tennessee, the one that we had missed. Didn't realize that there was a need to go out there and seek for, you know, seek it to get it in there by January. But just was speaking to her and asking her some of the things that I knew that was in the, in the plan, would that grant be available? Now, for all the state of Tennessee, there was only $250,000 available in grants for the whole state. Okay. That, that's the state preservation of, of, yes. We're still, you know.
Right, that, what I said to Lisa, I'm sorry, I didn't have the mic on. That was that one grant. There could be other grants out there. So, and I guess the only other thing I'm concerned about is, because I know a little bit about some grant work, through some work I've done in Smyrna, and that is, I guess we probably want to be careful about getting too far down the road, because they don't like to give grants to projects that are in progress.
And that's exactly what your point was, is, is talking to her, is that some of these things, they're not going to give you money for maintenance, you know. And I had posed that question, could we stage it? And, and, and actually, what I want to do is send her the document, say, would you tell me what you will cover and what you wouldn't? So whatever the tucking the brick stuff is, that would possibly be covered. Carpet, probably not.
Commissioner McAdoo?
I think a lot of this conversation was generated in the property management committee. And we went over some of the things that need to be done around this courthouse exterior. Yeah, I know. And cannot wait on no grant. Try to wait on some of those projects, we probably be in court on lawsuits, but we can't wait for no grant. So therefore, we need to move on with this project. And the quicker we get it done, as the mayor know, and we look at some of these, the better off we'll be. I'm afraid that if, the longer we wait, we're going to have an issue to happen, an incident, that may be very costly. And we have discussed this, as the mayor know, in detail. So we need to move on with these projects.
I'll just say that the money is already in the budget. And it, Ms. Nolan, it comes from the development tax, is that correct?
What we just did.
Yeah.
I mean, oh, yeah. Has it been amended into the budget? There's money available?
There's money available from the development tax for this, this project. For capital projects, and, and this would qualify. I just say that I, I agree with Commissioner McAdoo, this is, this is a beautiful building and needs to be preserved. And, and once we were able to take some of those holly trees off of the exterior, found out that because they had been overgrown for the last 20, 30 years, they had actually were beginning to grow in behind the brick. And so we're going to have to do a little bit more brick tucking. And, and then the two wings will have to be painted and et cetera. So the columns are all going to be painted on the outside. So it's going to make it look nice. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Next on the agenda, there's no report from Health and Education Committee. Property Management Committee, no report. Public Safety Committee, no report. Now I'll call on Chairman Mike Kush, Public Works and Planning Committee. Commissioner, you recognize?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you will look at your tab on your tablet for the Public Works and Planning, you will see an item 1, which is a two-page, finely spaced typed document, which I am not going to read. If you'd like to highlight some, I'm going to give that to you. But right above that is a one paragraph resolution. So let me read the resolution. Well, no, let me reverse that. that. This resolution is to establish a Board of Appeals, and this Board of Appeals basically is going to be a five-member group, that is going to be picked by the steering committee and approved by the county commission, and in a nutshell, I'm going to, I'm going to get to the point on what this two pages of finely spaced type means, is when building codes department or the stormwater department issues a summons or a violation to somebody, says your building is not up to code, or your pool is not up to code, or your erosion control in your ditch is not quite meets snuff, and the applicant or the person building wants to challenge that, or wants to appeal that, right now he has nowhere to go. So we're going to put a appeals board together where that person then can go and sit amongst five people in that profession, these board members will be made up of people that have a professional background in electric, plumbing, mechanical, pool, et cetera, that have the knowledge to hear the case and decide whether in fact the appeal is warranted, or if in fact the building official was correct in his initial citation. Does that make sense to you? Right now we have, we don't have that arm in place, but we need one. So I'm going to read the resolution. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, that the amended and restated resolution to establish and govern the Board of Adjustment and Appeals, attached hereto as Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein as if set forth verbatim, be and hereby is adopted and approved and deemed the governing authority for the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, resolved this 14th day of February 2019. Mr. Chairman, I so move for this resolution.
I have a motion, is there a second? I have a second, any questions?
I will do the best I can for questions. Mr. D.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the resolution says that these members will serve with pay, I was just going to ask, what will the pay be for those members? Will it be the same as the Board of Zoning Appeals and?
I do not have the exact dollar amount, the assumption would be, yes, it would be that or similar to the PBA, but I do not have an exact amount.
That's a complete difference, the PBA gets zero, and then the Board of Zoning Appeals gets 150 a meeting, so.
Well, then I would lean towards the PBA, but I do not know, Robert, what the pay amount was, Tanya did not give a dollar amount in her report at Public Works Committee, so I do not know.
And then would these be televised, or would they be meetings that are just held, like in a conference room somewhere? I noticed in there it said that there'd be minutes taken, it's a public record, but I didn't know if it was going to be advertised as a public meeting and put on TV so that people could watch what's going on with it.
That's a great question, and I do not have the answer to that.
I'm not opposed to setting up the board, but I just want to know how much we're going to spend on it, and if the public's invited to come to the meetings, and how they're going to know about it.
I don't know, if, if, I would assume that that would be open to the public, at least the meeting would be open to the public. If I, if I'm a public building official, and you're building something, and I say you're in violation, and you want to appeal to the board, I would assume that's open public record, and anybody can come watch you appeal your case, but I do not have an information, and Tanya did not get in that deep on that appeals.
We'll also have to have a budget amendment if we are going to pay these people.
Yeah, okay, all right, well, if we need to, we can send that back to budget and re-explore the next month if we need to.
I was going to make that recommendation, refer it back to committee, not so much about the TV and talking with our attorney, but more so of the pay question.
Let me ask our vice chair, Commissioner Piercy, who's vice chair of Public Works, do you recall any?
Commissioner Piercy.
Do you recall Tanya Bell discussing any payment on that board?
No, not at all.
Yeah, I don't remember that coming up.
Not at all, hadn't been discussed at all.
Okay, so if you don't mind, let's table, well, not table, but defer this then.
No, refer back, back.
Yeah.
Commissioner P.
I don't know if this will help or not, but when Commissioner Stevens had brought forth a pay adjustment a few months ago, we checked the different boards that were getting compensation, and that particular board we did look at, and the answer was a no compensation on that at that time, if my memory serves me correctly, and I think it does.
Which board are you talking about?
The group that we're looking to.
The Board of Appeals, okay, okay, all right. This is the first, now that I've read it, this is the first I've heard of a payment, so caught off guard.
There still seems to be some confusion, so without objection, we'll refer back to the appropriate committee.
Let me, let me chat with Tanya Bell and make sure her text is clear, and what her motive is, whether there is payment or not, and then if it needs, then if there is, let's go to budget.
Well, I make a motion that we refer this matter back to the Public Works Committee for further consideration.
We currently have a motion, I'll need a withdrawal from the motion, and whoever seconded the motion.
I withdraw my original resolution motion.
I will withdraw the second.
And, okay, so back to the, back to the motion from Commissioner Stevens to refer back to appropriate committee, and a second. Commissioner Dodd on the second, all in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. So noting. Next we have a call on Chairman Robert Stevens for the Steering Committee, resolution regarding property abatement on historic properties.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. About a year ago, we had a group of citizens come to our committee meeting and ask us to consider setting up a historical review board that would give abatements on properties that are certain ages, if individuals put money into rehabbing those and rehabilitating those to preserve the history, and back about a year ago when this came up, the committee did not take any action, because there were questions about whether this was constitutional or not with the state of Tennessee's constitution, and so last month, or this month at our steering committee, the individuals came back, and we decided we were going to move forward this and put a different kind of twist on it to see if we can get the state to correct any differences that there might be with the constitution, and I've thought about it some more, and I think I've found a way that we can probably get around it when the right time comes. So whereas Tennessee Code Annotated 675218 authorizes a county that meets certain requirements to appoint an historic property review board for that jurisdiction to be approved by a majority of the county governing body, and whereas the decision to come under TCA 675218 to allow for the creation of an historic property review board, and the abatement of certain property taxes as provided in the statutes requires a majority vote of the governing body of the county pursuant to TCA 675218(c)(1), and whereas it is in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County to encourage the preservation of historic property, and whereas there may remain some questions about the legality and/or constitutionality of the said statute, and whereas it is in the best interest of Rutherford County to proceed with the resolution to come under the provisions of TCA 675218, and to create a historic property review board, while at the same time requesting the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation to pursue a change to the Tennessee Constitution to address potential deficiencies in TCA 675218, to the extent the same exists. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners that this body elects to establish an historic properties review board pursuant to TCA 675218, and directs the county mayor to recommend members of such historic properties review board in accordance with law, and to be reviewed and confirmed by the Board of Commissioners, with any recommended guidelines proposed by the historic review board to be approved by the Board of Commissioners at a later date after consideration and adoption. Be it further resolved, but the Rutherford County delegation shall be and hereby is requested to take all such appropriate action to investigate and thereafter pursue a change in law, including but not limited to a change to the Tennessee Constitution, to address any legal deficiencies that may exist in Tennessee Code Annotated 675218. The county clerk is directed to send a copy of this resolution to the Rutherford County Legislative Delegation, resolve this 14th day of February 2019, and Mr. Chairman, I so move.
I have a motion, and we have a second discussion. Commissioner Gerling.
Yes, I read through some of the comments, I think it was at the Steering Committee minutes, that was in the Steering Committee minutes, I would much prefer to see a resolution going to our legislative delegation to resolve these legal issues before we step into a legal mess potentially. It just really doesn't make sense to me, we have enough legal issues as it is, without creating one, that we're well aware of upfront, so I'm a member of the Historical Society, I am for preservation, and the idea of this, I'm for, but the idea of moving forward in view of legal questions that are known upfront, this really doesn't sit well with me. That's, I mean, it just really doesn't, so I would like to see, come back with a resolution to ask our legislative delegation to try to resolve this issue, then we come back and implement some type of review committee, because I saw the house on the farm that we sold in 2004, that was initially started in 1792 and was later added to in 1800, I saw it have to be moved out of the county. Thankfully, my sister moved it to Rock Island, and that house is preserved, however, it would have been better had it stayed on the campus of Stewart's Creek Schools, so there should have been some incentive, like I said, I'm all for the intent of this, but I think doing this in light of, with the knowledge upfront that we have legal issues is not wise.
Other discussion?
Commissioner Gerling, I had some of the same fears, and I researched it and thought about it some more, the risk is very minimal, it has to be somebody that's actually aggrieved or affected by being denied one of these abatements, I mean, not just anybody out there in the world can sue and try to find a thing to be unconstitutional. Now, it was pointed out to us at the Steering Committee with some very good points, the Green Belt Program does this very same thing, and the constitutionality of that is in question, the Industrial Development Board gives tax breaks, the state constitution gives you five different reasons why somebody could have their property taxes abated or exempted, and one of those is educational, and I was going to propose that when these regulations are drafted up by this board, that the whole thing be cloaked in the guise of education, we want to preserve our history to educate our public about where we've been in the past, and so for educational purposes, we would like to see this happen so that people can see where our history was 100 years ago, 150 years ago, and preserve it that way. But the risk is very minimal, it will take probably six or eight years to amend the state constitution, so if we don't move forward on this now and wait for that, we're going to all be probably long gone somewhere else by then.
Other questions, Commissioner Reed?
Mr. Gerling, I totally understand what you're talking about, and know exactly what you mean, we all have that same fear, and just as the commissioner has said here, that we may be looking at four to five to six years of what it would do in the legislature as far as we're doing there, and the resolution states in there that we are asking at this time that our delegation would be forward with this and working on it to get this done and taking care of. The thing that we need to understand on that is the terminology that's used to this, that we do use the term abatement, and it's not just a complete removal of the, of the tax from our rolls, because what we were talking about, I think in that committee meeting, is that this is only for 10 to 15 years, and then the entire property goes back on the rolls, it's only a short period of time, or time to give them to, I guess, say, you know, get their feet back on the ground after they go through this cost of bringing these structures back to what they were in that day, and we're also not talking about somebody just going in there and remodeling a bathroom and doing that sort of thing, we're talking about restoring it back to the time that it was 100, 175 years ago at that time, so we're seeing today that we're continually losing these, these homes, these structures and what we're having, and this would be something that we may can maintain some of those that's right here in Rutherford County. Rutherford County is quite unique, if you ever look at it, and I noticed tonight, as we talked about in some of these resolutions right here, that, you know, we would like to be ahead of some other counties in this, there are other counties that haven't gotten to that point, but they're trying awful hard to do it themselves too, and we think this would give us this opportunity to put this, to do the, the education part as far as what this county is involved in, and what we have as far as the history of Rutherford County. There used to be a terminology that used to be said back in the 1800s and early 1900s in the state legislature, that used to say, so goes Rutherford, so goes the state of Tennessee, and I think that maybe this right here would be one of these times, that we've always seen this with some of the things that we've seen here in what we do, we're sort of a county that other people look at, and I think this would maybe one of those things as far as preserving our history.
Other comments, discussion? Commissioner Allen?
I'm assuming this is a non-compensated board?
There's nothing in there about pay.
So I'm just curious, should we specify that it's an uncompensated board, or just the fact that it's not in there means they're not?
I don't think it's compensated, it doesn't say, the last one we looked at said it was paid, this one doesn't say anything about it, so I would anticipate that there's no pay for this committee.
Most people like history, you don't, they don't, they do it because they love it, not because they want to get paid.
Any other comments, we're back on the motion and a second for adoption of the resolution. Any other comments? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. Now we're into any other business? And ladies and gentlemen, we, we need to go into executive session, so at this time, I'm going to ask everybody to vacate the chamber, just step outside the door, it shouldn't take very long, and then we'll come back in and for any other business, this is a client attorney privilege, and so I'll give you a few moments, we'll stand in recess for a moment, members don't leave, so as we move into executive session. Members in the gallery? We'll come back out of executive session, come back out of recess, I'm going to turn it over to our county attorney.
Just very briefly, so we're coming out of executive session, during the executive session, we discussed a pending matter that involves the county as a defendant, I presented information to you, you all ask a few questions, there's been no deliberations, and so to the extent you want to take any action on the information I presented, now's the time to do so in open session.
Commissioner Phillips?
Thank you, Mayor Ketchum, in the matter of Doe versus Rutherford County, I have a motion for us to reapprove the class action settlement, the class action agreement as amended.
Have a motion to accept and a second as amended. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. All opposed, motion carries. All right, does anybody have any other business to come before us before we adjourn? Commissioner P. Ketchum.
We always like to talk about Ketchum, that's right, and as a matter of fact, there's a Country Ham Breakfast out there, February 16, from 6 to 10, Country Ham Breakfast, and also pancakes, but we'd be delighted to have you all.
Oh, pancakes this time, huh? I got a sweet tooth. Other announcements, statements and announcements? No more ham breakfast? Okay, well, just want to say happy Valentine to each one of you, go home, see your spouse or significant other, and, I'm sorry? I didn't hear. Oh, the trip, the trip is this weekend, I'm sorry, this coming week, we have six of us, I believe, representing the county commission, we go on to San Jose, California, to look at the composting facility. We'll be going to San Jose, California, to look at the composting facility. There is two members from each city except for Eguaville. Their mayor is going to be attending. We have the mayor of Laverne and the assistant city administrator. We have the mayor and city manager of Smyrna, and we have the city manager and assistant city manager of City of Murfreesboro. We have a lady will be joining us from Mike Skipper's organization, the GNRC. She seems to be one of the experts for Greater Nashville Government Commission, Regional Council, I'm sorry, Greater Nashville Regional Council. They are paying their own way, and so we'll go to San Jose, California, then we'll go to look at that composting facility. Just in this week, we have another opportunity to go see Waste 1, which is north of San Jose, that's not a republic-owned facility. This company is out of Zurich, Switzerland. It's supposed to be state-of-the-art composting. We'll come back, get up the next morning, go to Las Vegas to a facility, which is the largest and newest recycling facility in the country. And fairly close to that is a 7,000-pig hog farm that we'll be visiting as well. They, Las Vegas, the greater Las Vegas area is diverting 42% of the food waste collected from all the hotels, motels, and restaurants and by feeding it to the pigs. And then they turn around and process those hogs and sell it back to the hotels and restaurants. So it's a circle of life, if you will. And we'll be back to make a full report on those negotiations, but this is the first time, or second time, I guess, outside of Sevierville, that we're pulling the whole community together to address our solid waste needs. And then we'll look forward to making that report upon our return. We'll go to Public Works on the first committee and make that report, and see if we can get things going in that direction. Any questions? Commissioner Cook.
Did you find out anything about the solid waste that they have in, was it Lexington, Kentucky, that we were talking about the other morning?
No, ma'am, I have not.
I thought it was interesting because they did, they put theirs in a cave.
Yeah. The gentleman I talked to at the Laverne Rescue Squad Ham Breakfast, one of our EMS members was from Lexington, Kentucky, and he said they started a recycling program in a cave up there, but I didn't know who to contact, and I haven't had time this week to reach out to those folks. But everything's on the table as far as our solid waste is concerned. Mr. Chairman Kush, if you can, you'll be out there with us. If you can slide down, we'd love to have you. Okay? Anything else to come before us? Seeing none, happy Valentine's, we'll stand adjourned.